Good morning. I'm going to call the Thursday, June 9th special meeting, council meeting to order. Will you please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Council agency member Francisco.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
House.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
Self.
Here.
White.
Yes.
Mayor Chair Schneider.
Here. And I know council member House is on his way. He'll be here shortly. Any public comment for items not on the agenda? I see Linda Love, you checked public comment, but is it on the RDA stuff or is it on?
On RDA.
Oh, that's okay. That's fine. Okay, so. But any other public comment for items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing them, we'll close the public comment and we'll move on to item one if you could read that.
Redevelopment Agency Capital Program Review and Development.
Thank you. Mr. Bossy.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Agency Board Members. Brian Bossy, Housing and Redevelopment Manager with the City of Santa Barbara. We're here today to talk about the Redevelopment Agency's capital program for fiscal year 2012 and also looking out towards the future of the Redevelopment Agency. And based on that lead-in, I should make you aware that what we're planning out today as far as future, that is assuming that the Redevelopment Agency will be here as of July 1st, 2011. As you know, the governor's current budget proposal has the elimination of all redevelopment agencies in the state of California. That is part of the proposal. So, we're assuming we are going to be here and we'll keep you posted as to the outcomes up in Sacramento, although I'm sure you'll be keenly aware of what's going on up there as well. So I wanted to put that out there first. So as far as today's presentation outline, I'll go through real quickly the purpose of today's meeting, review the current capital program, as well as sources of project funding, proposed funding options, kind of to help the Agency Board move forward, and then Agency Board discussion on the Redevelopment Agency's capital program, including confirming the current capital program, as well as staff's proposed funding options. So the purpose of today's meeting, again, confirm our existing, the Redevelopment Agency's existing capital program. This capital program has been put together over a number of years, so there are projects that are older, there are some that are newer, and a whole mix in between, as well as prioritize future capital, our future capital program, based on the remaining four fiscal years of tax increment revenues. We conservatively estimate, again, assuming we're here, that once everything's said and done and operations are paid for, our debt service is paid for, that the Redevelopment Agency Board will have about $6.5 million each of those four fiscal years to put towards capital projects and programs. So that's where we get the 26 million. Our current capital program. Our current capital program consists of 27 projects and over $27 million in funding. We have one proposed community grant that is pending, and that's for $1 million. That's the Ensemble Theater, and that will be before the Finance Committee next week, June 14th, and then before the Agency Board on the 21st. So as far as a review of our capital program, we're going to switch over our technology here real quickly. So here are our current capital projects and programs. And the way we've set this up for you today is we've divided it into various, what phases they are in the development process. As you can see, towards the top end, we have quite a number of projects in the construction phase of development. We move down from there to final design, preliminary design, projects in conceptual design, and then projects that are concept at this particular time, as well as at the bottom there, a few miscellaneous projects. Now, as this is your opportunity, why we're here today, one of the reasons, this is your opportunity to look over and confirm this capital program. For example, there might be projects in there that you wish to move around, or maybe you don't, but this is your time to tell us if we are moving along the right course, and if not, then you can redirect us accordingly. So again, we recommend, and we think it would be prudent if the Agency Board focused on projects below the construction phase. So all that big grouping of projects at the top are all construction-related, or in the construction phase, or about to be. So we suggest you focus on projects below that. And I should let you know, I updated this, and unfortunately, this isn't the one I wanted to bring, but there are a few projects in there that are contractual obligations, and so those need to be completed. So that's kind of a stay-away, we are required to do these through various development agreements. The first is the Chase Palm Park, Listeria Arbor. That's down there in the conceptual phase. That is one of them. Then we have, let's see, moving up, we have the visitor center condominium purchase, as well as the lower State Street sidewalks. That's the lower part of State Street that would complement the future development of Lower State Street. So all the other sidewalks are being completed except for that lower portion. So we think it's important that we complete that last component. It's, again, about $335,000 for that. And then our final, okay, that's three of them. What's the last one? Oh, I'm sorry. And up top is the Helena parking lot, but that's in the construction phase. So again, we're asking you to, might be wise to stay out of that particular area because those are moving forward in the construction phase.
Mr. Bossy.
Yes.
At the very top, it says remaining funding from completed capital projects. So those projects that came in under budget, so that's free, like, money that could be reallocated?
That it is. So up at the top, you have a total of about $687,000, and those are from about three or four capital projects that have been completed and were under budget. Again, it's a very good time to go out to do construction projects. Bidding is, it's a very favorable bidding environment. So what we've proposed to do is take those remaining funds, the 687,000, and then also at the bottom of the page, you have a couple of other project accounts, our Opportunity Acquisition Fund, our Housing Fund Contingency Account, as well as our Redevelopment Agency Project Contingency Account. So what we're saying is take that 687 at the top, and the funds down here, they total $1,622,800, and reprogram those, and we have some ideas for you on that as well. So this is our current capital program, and I'm going to toggle back to the other presentation Back to sources of project funding. Three sources of funding for discussion today. One is the one-time funding. That's, again, the $1,622,000 that comes from projects being completed, as well as those bottom contingency accounts being swept up. Also, non-recurring funds. And this is a change from what was in the council agenda report. We've been working with finance, and thankfully, finance was really able to get into the details and look through all of our accounts and basically clean-house, sweep everything out that hasn't been committed, and we estimate that that's about $1.5 million in additional funding. So that's going to be different than your agenda report. It's a good thing. That's an additional $1.5 million. And then at the bottom is our, and that primarily comes from, the non-recurring funds, comes from tax increment revenues overestimated, I'm sorry, over budget, which is a plus. Our last source of funding is our future tax increment, and that, again, is the $6.5 million that we're estimating in each of the next four fiscal years, 2015, which is when the project area expires. After that, it's a different ballgame. So that's 26 million. The total there, $29,122,800. As far as proposed funding options, as I mentioned earlier on the first spreadsheet, one possible option for you is to transfer the $1.6 million that was swept up from projects that were completed, as well as the $1.5 million in non-recurring funds. Take that funding, it's a little over $3 million, $3,122,800, and put that towards the Police Department building project. Next is our future tax increment funds, and what we're saying with these, we'll get to this in a minute, is appropriate the 26 million in future tax increment, again, 2012 through 2015 fiscal years, to various projects as follows. And this is a guide to hopefully get the discussion started with the Agency Board. And so what we have here, on the top portion, the shaded area, are what we're recommending for future funding. And this is based on projects that have been submitted, the entire list, I should say, both the shaded portion as well as the non-shaded portion at the bottom. These are projects and programs that have been submitted over the past three or more fiscal years from various departments interested in receiving Redevelopment Agency funding to either supplement existing funds or to pay for the entirety of those projects. So what we've done is we've looked through all of these projects, and based on comments from the Agency Board over the past few fiscal years during our capital process, we have put them in a list of what we think you might be interested in based on those comments. And the total there, and the shaded portion, once you go down the list, is about $29,122,000. So we're right within what we estimate we'll have through 2015, again, assuming that we are here. So let me flip back, and we'll get back to these, don't worry, we are going to come back to these. Let me get back to our presentation. So again, looking at today's action items, what we're looking to do is confirm our existing capital program, and we'll flip back to that, see if there are projects, are you comfortable with where we're going, because if you are, we will continue to move forward on all of those projects. Again, they're all estimated at this, the funding is all estimated. It was put together at the end of last month, and these projects are moving forward, so there's going to be small discrepancies here and there. We haven't had any major items before you over the past few weeks to the tunes of millions of dollars, so those should be pretty close. So confirm that existing capital program, or reprogram if you wish, and then prioritize our future capital program based on that $26 million. And so with that, it might be an opportune time to flip back to that first attachment, which is our current capital program, and we can start the discussion there.
Questions first, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bossy, going down the first attachment here, and it mentions the Plaza de la Gare infrastructure, and it's under conceptual design. And list conceptual design is 2.1 million, and below it is the Library Plaza, also conceptual design, 184,000. Is the de la Gare inclusive of the construction costs, or is that truly conceptual design?
Madam Mayor, Agency Board Member Rouse, that, the Plaza de la Gare is inclusive of construction through the end of the project. That's the whole.
Okay, yeah, it's still misleading with the conceptual design moniker, I thought that.
Yeah, we fund different, Plaza de la Gare's been around for a while, so with our later projects, knowing the time limits of the Redevelopment Agency, what we've been focusing on is if a project is just at the beginning, the Agency Board has just funded maybe the design and engineering component, holding off on the construction component until it's ripe, which then frees up those additional funds to put towards other projects and programs.
And my next question would be on the Lower State Street sidewalks. Is that between the freeway and Cabrillo, is that what we're talking about?
The Lower State Street sidewalks, yes. The $335,000 is for between, right around where Big Dog used to be down to Cabrillo, roughly that area.
And we are assuming that as, the project as designed is going forward as designed, is that, is that with losing the lane and all that?
Madam Mayor, Agency Board Member Rouse, that is my understanding, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. White.
I have a question, Madam Mayor, on the second sheet. Should I wait to, on that? Okay. The, first of all, the Mason Street Bridge, are we, we've done, we're doing so well on the bridges, can you explain how, would we lose that bridge, lose that wonderful funding, or could you explain how that fits into the program?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, I think it'd be best if a member of our Public Works staff commented on the bridge program. It's my understanding, and maybe Mr. Kelly will be able to clarify, that this is supplemental to funding that may be already acquired, but I'll let Mr. Kelly, or I'll speak for him.
Agency Board, in this particular case, this request was made before we found out that we had actually gotten 100% grant funding on this project. Is that the Federal Highway Administration portion of the grant, 88.5%, was funded, and then the city match was this anticipated $1.1 million. Subsequent to this initial request to the agency, we found out that the state had come up with, for our share, as part of some bridge toll program excess funding that they had had. So this request is no longer current.
Is the state funding secured? I mean, we've heard that before, right? Cabrillo Bridge being one of them and...
Oh, yes. To the best of our knowledge, yes, because the, it seems, their promise seems highly plausible. As far as being absolutely secure, I cannot speak for the governor of California, or its legislature.
Okay.
Plausible.
Okay, thank you. Did you have other questions, Mr. White?
One more question, Madam Mayor, thank you. And that's on the De La Vina Figuero intersection improvements. I actually haven't heard a full story on that. I've heard shreds of information as time's gone by. I've heard that there was possibilities for grant funding on that, and anyway, can you perhaps explain a little bit on that?
Agency Board, is that there are several projects that are in this, remaining unfunded projects that are in a, are in flux as far as doing the final resolution as to whether or not the application is still current. And so Public Works is following through as to, is that still a request? And I'm not, I can't speak to that as still a current valid request.
We are planning to come back to council on those two intersections specifically because of the, once we've done some, excuse me, some preliminary design work, and we need to relook at those because whether or not the signals are warranted, and what the state will pay for and what they won't pay for.
Great, thank you.
There's a deadline for that, too, with the state funding? I think I heard the end of July or something like that.
Yeah, we're coming back, though.
Before then? Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Self.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The waterfront signage program, is that for the tsunami signage?
Madam Mayor, Council, Agency Board Member Self, no, that is actually the last remnant portion of the West Beach Pedestrian Improvement Project. That was originally part of the project, but as we got into the details and a number of issues came up, including issues with the contractor, we thought it best to really focus on the major construction project at that particular time. That particular, there are funds remaining in that account, however, we need to hold on to those because there's some legal action pending between the city and the contractor, and so I'm not sure when that's going to be resolved. So our idea here was to put that forward, the $25,000, so we can actually assign funding towards that particular project and keep it moving forward. They are looking forward, and they are, they really want that last portion, that last component of the project to be completed.
And could you describe the Chapala Street corridor improvements, what that entails?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Self, that first item, the Chapala Street corridor improvements, is, if you recall, a number of years ago, there were a number of improvements along Chapala based on the Chapala Street Design Guidelines. Changes in sidewalk coloring, curb extensions, landscaping, and things of that nature. So the Redevelopment Agency Board helped fund a couple of those intersection improvements. This particular program would address additional improvements along the corridor. It was originally anticipated that the agency would step forward and move a few of those projects or assist in a few of those intersections, and then private development would then spur the rest of those improvements as they marched forward. As you know, developments slowed down a little bit, and so this would go in and look at opportunities to improve certain parts of Chapala Street in, along with the Chapala Street Design Guides.
With the language change regarding to bulb-outs on the Chapala, does that change the scope of this?
Yes, it would.
So that...
We would go with the current Chapala Street guidelines and any changes that have been incorporated since the last time we were out there doing improvements.
And then, on this page, it has proposed $2 million for the Library Plaza construction, plus on page one, the renovation for $184,000. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Agency Board Member Self, yes, that is correct. The $184,000 is for the design and engineering component.
Right.
Of the project.
Okay, and then, one thing we discussed, and I don't see it on future or anything, maybe I'm missing it, is the Chase Palm Park playground replacement. The last meeting, it came to our attention that maybe this money would be shifted for the stair replacement at the beach. Is this the time to do that, or is that later?
Madam Mayor, Agency Board Member Self, the Chase Palm Park playground replacement is on our proposed future funding.
Right. And the stairs are not...
It was in the general fund, the proposals to put it to RDA, which frees up general fund money if we want to look at the Mesa Steps. And are we talking about that today? Because that was sort of a remnant of the general fund budget piece.
Correct, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers.
Because they can't use RDA money for the Mesa.
No, I know, I think, but the mayor was asking about more information at this time about that project.
Correct, and I think today would be an appropriate time with this action freeing up those general fund monies. If you wanted to give direction to staff as part of the final budget to include the Mesa Lane steps, or at least identify go-for-grant money, and that a match would be there at the time.
Okay.
We can talk about that today.
Since this is out of RDA, we can do that later.
Okay.
Okay. And what are the, on the first page, the State Street Pedestrian Amenities Pilot?
Madam Chair, Agency Board Member Self, the State Street Pedestrian Amenities Pilot was the project that went through some discussion a few months ago, otherwise infamously known as the Bench Project. And at that particular time, the Agency Board put that project on the shelf. So if it is your desire today, you can go further than that at this point.
Okay, so we can put it down into the remaining unfunded projects and free up those funds for anything else?
If that is the Agency Board's desire, we could make that happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just in general, you're throwing an awful lot at us in a three-hour period here, and for a while I was thinking maybe I'm the only one that doesn't know what it's all about, but then I start listening to my questions from my colleagues, and I realize nobody knows what it's all about here. So that's sort of a criticism, take it that way, because I, we're talking about 26 million bucks, I don't want to go, okay, sure, why not? Let's go to lunch. Question on de la Gare, Plaza de la Gare infrastructure, conceptual design, et cetera. We really have not approved anything on that, other than go out and design something, correct? And then we'll take a look at it.
Madam Chair, Agency Board Member Hotchkiss, that project is moving forward. We've gotten a go-ahead from City Council. We're going through the design review process now. We're actually on the verge of finishing up our DART process. We have a few remaining items that need to be completed over the next couple of weeks, but then the DART process would be complete, and then it would move into the next...
Come back to council at any point for any...
It would, we would propose at the completion of that DART process to come back and give you an update on the project itself.
But it's not a determinant of, it's just, you're going to keep us informed, that's all right now. I was not aware that we got full approval on all this.
No, what is, Councilmember Hotchkiss, what, we're in the process now of design review, and we've been given the go-ahead for that. The next step would be, we would come back to you and provide an update, and the council, the Agency Board can do what they wish at that particular time. But as far as approvals, the next approval, if you will, would be a construction contract down the road. We have to go through an environmental impact, or an environmental process following the DART review. So we would come back upon completion of that for a construction contract approval, and that's a ways down the road.
So did the council approve leveling of the road and all that, and hardscape? Because I don't remember that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, that's what the design review process is for, and so that's part of the DART process, is making that design, move that design forward. It does include at this particular time, a lowering of the design at this point, the conceptual design, a lowering of the entire plaza.
And was there a hardscape that was approved for that or not?
Again, that's all part of the design review process.
I keep, I'm not getting an answer here, was there...
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, the Redevelopment Agency Board gave the go-ahead for staff to pursue the design review process with Plaza de la Gare, and that's what we've been engaged in for the past few years. We're currently at the very end of completing our DART process, which is part of the city design review process. At that time, we would come back and give you an overall update of the project and where it's at. Of course, it's open to the board at that particular time, they can do what they wish with the project. But if that were to go favorably, we would continue along the development process, and the next formal approval as far as construction contracts and things like contract approval would be the construction contract in a year plus.
Okay, well, maybe we can talk here, you can show me more about what the design actually is down the line, we don't need to take everybody's time here.
That'd be, Madam Mayor, that'd be great.
Exactly what Mr. Bossy was suggesting, is that it will come back to council with the design, and we can make a decision at that point where to go with it. Yeah.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, that would be part of the update. We give you an update of where the design's at, what it looks like, and things like that.
That's expected to come back about when?
Good question. Again, we're in the final stages of our DART process. We think we could have that wrapped up, maybe in the next, the DART process itself, maybe in the next month or two, and then put all that information together and come back. It'd probably be late summer, early fall.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rouse?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Couple of quick other questions, Mr. Bossy. Parking structure number 10, public restroom, is that the one incorporated inside that structure, or is there something else being thought about?
Madam Chair, Agency Board Member Rouse, that's an additional restroom. There's an existing restroom that is part of the structure itself. This would be on the outside, towards that back passeo where the winding stairs come out of Parking Structure 10, which is, again, located at Ortega.
Very good. And then the RDA parking lot upgrade at 235 State, is that the surface lot that's, Roco and all that, is that?
Madam Chair, Agency Board Member Rouse, actually, no. 235 is the Redevelopment Agency-owned parking lot next to Enterprise Fish Company.
Oh, right, right.
That was acquired from Caltrans a number of years ago.
Thank you. And last question, submission, Mission Lagoon Restoration, is that something that's RDA, or is that a, is that a part of the Measure B project list?
Madam Chair, Agency Board Member Rouse...
Zachary's coming up, too, so...
I hear Jill coming up to the microphone.
Agency Board, Board Member Rouse, the Mission Lagoon, Laguna Lagoon Restoration Project is something that currently has some design funding in the Creeks Program, so yes, that's something that is proceeding with Measure B funds, as well as something that we would seek grant funds for.
Thank you.
Ms. Self?
Thank you. I guess I'm, we could redirect you to readjust the, what the remaining Chapala improvements would be, and that could go back into our available fund, right?
Madam Chair, Agency Board Member Self...
Since it's unfunded, it doesn't matter.
Exactly.
Okay.
You got it.
Thank you. And then, what are the Lower Milpus pedestrian improvements?
Madam Chair, Agency Board Member Self, the Lower Milpus pedestrian improvements are geared towards from the freeway, the 101, down to Cabrillo Boulevard. If you notice, along that stretch of Milpus Street, there's a lack of sidewalks and lighting and infrastructure. As you know, it's been a, the area's been a source of concern to the Agency Board, and that has been mentioned, the desire to fund improvements in that particular area. So that would be the idea there. It's also separate from the Cabrillo Ball Field. So you're talking about street improvements, but then the Cabrillo Ball Field's right across the street. So it really is a bigger-picture project.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, why don't we move to public comment? We have quite a few speakers. a few speakers, and you'll have two minutes up at the podium. And we'll start with Linda Love, to be followed by Leon Olson.
And Madam Mayor, I might want to just put a little of this in context. Typically, we bring the capital projects for the RDA to you after the rest of the budget, and I think we're accelerating the process a little bit this year because we've been monitoring what's been going on with the state legislature. And in consultation with the city attorney, his recommendation was that although we have a cooperative agreement between the city and the Redevelopment Agency to do projects, that it wasn't specific, especially with the use of future tax increment monies until the end of the RDA. And in talking with him, it was his belief that it would be to the city's interest, and to the RDA's interest, to have a more firm agreement that's very specific about the projects that we plan to do through the end of the Redevelopment Agency. There may be the ability to amend it, but we just felt that we need to start dealing with this now. And the idea is, quite honest, is to come back to you in two weeks with a very specific agreement between the Redevelopment Agency and the city, and then the existing funds that are in the Redevelopment Agency's accounts would be transferred to the city before July 1st in a special fund for the completion of these projects. And then also, we would have a stronger case that we have an agreement to use the future tax increment funds through the next four years. So that's part of the reason why this is rushed a little bit, Councilmember Hotchkiss, is we were monitoring what was going on with the RDAs. It looked like that was off the table. Now it's back on the table, so we felt we needed to come to you and make some decisions now, so we could strengthen our position.
Well, I very much appreciate that. Thank you very much.
And perhaps in two weeks, when the official transfer happens, if we could talk about what you mean by we can amend things in the future, because I think there's some hesitancy of setting things in stone right now, when we're looking at a number of years and $26 million. There might be tweaks here and there. And what happens if projects come under budget? And what do we do with those funds, and those kind of things?
And I think the city attorney would like us to be as specific as possible...
Yes, understandably so.
...to bulletproof it, but...
Mr. Riley?
But, Madam Chair, if I could just mention, and on that particular question, it's just important to keep in mind, these will be agreements, actually, what I anticipate is a series of project-specific agreements. They will be agreements between the agency and the city council. So if you follow my drift, you can amend them.
Right.
But if you don't want to amend them, and if we need to say to the state, "We have binding contracts for these projects," and in fact, we've spent $200,000, $500,000 on soft costs in designing these projects, so they're real projects. If we need to say they're binding contracts, we will be able to say that.
Great, okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, now we'll move on to public comment. I'll start again with Linda Love, be followed by Leon Olson.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yep.
My name is Linda Love. I've lived in Santa Barbara for 42 years, and I would like to speak in favor of the Library Plaza project renovation. And I'm going to read it, because I'm a nervous speaker. I would like to put in a word for civic pride. We live in a beautiful city where previous city councils have cared about the aesthetics of the community. This will be our only chance in the near or distant future, in my opinion, to have resources for a civic project like the renovation of the plaza. The historic Library Building is surrounded by beautiful institutions, the Art Museum, the Courthouse, the nearby Granada Theater, and numerous art galleries. I don't think sticking some security cameras on the building does much for the area as far as security. There are some issues there. There's a fantastic children's library in the works for downstairs, and I think the library grounds are not inviting for children or anyone else who sees the library as a community gathering place. Let's work to make our city more beautiful for its citizens and the many visitors who come here. Please vote for the renovation of the library grounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Leon Olson will be followed by Steve Cushman.
Good morning. I'm Leon Olson. In 1977, in June, I moved here from Lincoln, Nebraska. And after a couple of weeks here, I meandered down to State Street and caught a Summer Solstice Parade. I joined that parade, and that day, not knowing really what that would lead to, but 34 years later, here I am, still on that parade. Many things have happened during that time. I've been six years on the Events and Festivals Committee, I've been eight years on the Arts Advisory Board, president of the CAF, a director of the Santa Barbara Arts Collaborative, and many other arts associations. And I have a job, too, as a developer and builder. About 11 years ago, six or seven of us saw the need for an arts facility, community backstage. We felt like that was very important, because we all believed in the importance of arts to the Santa Barbara community. It's what makes us different from a lot of different places, a lot of towns in California. As a businessman, I see its importance. So we began, 11 years ago, a process of trying to figure out how to provide a community workshop. And we're this close. We've made the plans, we've been in front of various committees, and we're ready to go. And we believe very, that it's very important for our community. And I'd like to speak in support of that, and hope that you will continue your support for us. Thank you.
Steve Cushman will be followed by Frank Goss.
I'm Mayor Schneider, members of the council. Steve Cushman, I'm president of the Santa Barbara Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to speak in favor of the renovation of the Library Plaza. Whether you need to spend $2 million or not is a question, but certainly the design phase seems very appropriate to me. I think you have a great design firm that you're working with. They did the plaza in front of the LA Library, which in fact was done by Santa Barbara Artists. And it's spectacular. So I think the job you did across the street, in front of the low-income housing, in front of the parking garage, has served us very well. I see no loitering going on there. It's a completely open, beautiful plaza that shows art. And hopefully, the designers will take that into account. So I'm very much in favor of the project. I hope that you'll support it. Thank you.
Frank Goss will be followed by Bill Collier.
Good morning. My name is Frank Goss, and first, I owe an apology to Councilman White and Mayor Schneider for missing an appointment, and please accept my apologies. I have two businesses at 7 and 11 East Annapamoo, and I rent the back portions of 13 and 15 and 1206 State Street. I have an art gallery and a small restaurant where I employ about 20 Santa Barbers. I own 7 East Annapamoo, and I have been there for about 17 years. All of the buildings that I use look onto Library Park, and I would guess that I am the person who looks most often at Library Park. I have lobbied Mayors Miller, Bloom, and now Schneider about the problems associated with Library Park. However, the situation is much worse now than it was 17 years ago, when I moved in. Many years ago, I came to you with a request to light the blocks either side of State Street on Annapamoo for safety, and you did that. Subsequently, I came and asked if you could do something about the landscape at 12, at the 1200 block on State Street, and you did that. Subsequent to that, I came and asked you to help with the Granada remodel, and you did that. And subsequent to that, I said, "You know, it's a great building, and we don't have a parking lot." And you built a parking lot. All of these things have made this city better and safer. Thank you. And now to our little park. Over the past half-dozen years, I have watched the park increasingly serve as a home to those less fortunate. Although not all of them are associated with crime, I have watched the park become a home to drug dealing, prostitution, and physical abuse. I personally have cleaned up or helped clean up drug paraphernalia, condoms, and human waste. I didn't do that for you. I did that because children use that park all the time. More to the point, the park in its current situation puts together two populations, and they will collide, and the collision will be disastrous.
You do need to wind up.
It is increasingly violent, and I think we are the adults in charge. We need to make some change to that park that makes that a safe part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, there's Bill, followed by Claudia Bratton.
Good morning, Chair Schneider and Agency Board Members. My name is Bill Collier, and I'm the executive director of the Downtown Organization. And as you know, many of these projects are important to downtown. The one I'm here to support today is the Victoria Theater funding. The Ensemble Theater has shared with the DO the plans for the exterior and the interior. We believe the project would be very beneficial for West Victoria, as well as for the larger downtown business district. The complete renovation of the Victoria Theater is very important, finishing touch in revitalizing the downtown performing arts district. Santa Barbara doesn't have, and certainly needs, a 300-seat theater in the downtown area, which would provide an intimate and affordable venue for many of the performing arts events, for which now there is nothing available. The synergy of having four differently sized theaters within a small area close to parking and fine restaurants will be a key component of a lively, energized, and economically healthy downtown. The Ensemble Theater has done all the work and is raising bulk of the needed funds. On a proportionate basis, this project is a great investment value for the agency, combining both public and private resources. I urge you to confirm the previous allocation and approve Ensemble's requested grant. Thank you.
Claudia Bratton will be followed by Derek Weston.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and committee. I brought a bag full of plans. That's just some of them. I actually cleaned some out. Just so you know, we actually even, this is the gate plans that were...
You're talking about the Community Arts Workshop, correct?
Hmm?
You want, just to be clear, you're talking about the Community Arts Workshop?
Community Arts Workshop, yeah. These are the gate plans that were approved, and we actually bought the steel for them on a grant that we got from Santa Barbara Beautiful. So we really want this to happen, as you know, and I've worked for 11 years on it, and I'm not going to give up. And it's so important to the community. And right now, I invite all of you, and I know you will come to the workshop and see it, and everyone watching this, because this is how this Community Arts Workshop works. And you can see art being made, people from, we bring the community together through the arts, and this is where it really happens. So thank you, and I just want to see this really happen for everybody, and for my grandchildren, too. Thank you.
Derek Weston will be followed by Jonathan Fox.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the council. My name is Derek Weston. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Ensemble, and I'm here, of course, to urge you to confirm the $1 million community grant that has been set aside for a long time for Ensemble. I've been looking forward to this morning for a long, long time. Ellie Langer and I first appeared before you in January of 2005 to discuss our RDA assistance for Ensemble, and you have patiently reserved a substantial fund for this purpose that entire time. For our part, we have worked the entire six years to get to this day, very, very carefully planning to make sure that this project would be financially successful, that it would be completed in financially sound manner, that we would be able to operate the theater in a very successful financial manner, and that it would contribute artistically in a very appropriate way to the community. We believe that it will make a terrific contribution to the downtown, both artistically and from a business perspective. We hope to break ground in the fall, and that's our goal. We're now almost ready to go. I'm very proud of the fact that we have unanimous board approval for every decision we have made throughout this entire time, tremendous board support, not only philosophically but financially, which Dwight Coffin, our president, will tell you about. And I'm very proud of the broad, broad community support that we have received for our efforts. We believe that the amount that we are requesting from you is very reasonable in light of the total project costs. We think we're doing the bulk of the work. We think this is a wonderful public-private venture. The last thing I want to say is that I really want to thank the many, many people who have supported this, our board members, a number of whom are here and are very hardworking, the many people who have written you about this project, and especially those who have taken their time this morning to come talk to you in person. Thank you very much.
Jonathan Fox will be followed by Dwight Coffin.
Madam Mayor, council members, good morning. I'm Jonathan Fox, Executive Artistic Director of Ensemble Theater Company. Before joining Ensemble in 2006, I was artistic director of Two River Theater in Red Bank, New Jersey, for 12 years. During that time, we developed a new performance venue, moving from a 145-seat theater to a 350-seat theater. We developed the space for the exact same reasons that Ensemble is moving to the Victoria Theater, to give us the ability to expand our artistry, to attract artists of the highest caliber to the region, to increase our visibility and presence. The project was enormously successful. In the first season we opened, we tripled our attendance and brought in visitors from all over the state of New Jersey and from New York. We became one of the top theaters in the state and was profiled twice that season in American Theater Magazine. The benefit was not just to the theater, but to the town as well. There was no theater space of that size in that region. A real 300-seat theater is vital to presenting drama that requires that audience members see the actors' faces. As Mr. Collier mentioned, there is currently no adequate, fully functioning 300-seat theater in downtown Santa Barbara. Ensemble's programming will utilize the Victoria about 26 to 30 weeks a year, leaving about 20 to 25 weeks that the space will be available to other arts groups, including dance, music, film, and lectures. As part of our design process, we included representatives from the leading arts groups in town to solicit their opinions on the renovations, and they were very, very positive. UCSB has stated publicly that they are very keen to bring one of their student productions to our venue every season. The new, larger venue will increase our ability to bring in name actors, two of whom have already told me they would be interested in performing in the new venue. We will be able to expand our programming and our education offerings, which in turn will expand the number of artists we hire and bring to town. We hope that the new venue, well, we anticipate that the new venue will increase out-of-town arts patrons. There was an economic study done a few years ago. Santa Barbara Arts Commission took part of this study that showed that arts patrons from outside the community generate more income through lodging, dining, and other tourist activities.
Do I have to wind up, please?
Ensemble has been a part of Santa Barbara for more than 30 years. We are uniquely positioned to make this project a big success. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dwight Coffin will be followed by Ellie Langer.
Good morning, Mayor Schneider and council members. I'm Dwight Coffin, President of the Board of Directors of Ensemble Theater Company. We seek your support for funding the promised RDA grant of $1 million to Ensemble for the renovation of Victoria Hall. Ensemble is celebrating its 31st year providing high-quality theater to Santa Barbara. In this tough economy, Ensemble is thriving. We have a talented, hard-working board who are very excited and enthusiastic about this project, and we are fiscally responsible. Our 16-member board, our staff, and leaders of our capital campaign have pledged $2.6 million for the renovation of the Vic. I speak for the board urging you to keep the funding of the $1 million grant to Ensemble Theater Company. We thank you for your consideration.
Eleanor Langer will be followed by Cecilia Rodriguez.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of the Agency Board. I am Eleanor Langer, a former member of your board, a former member of the Ensemble Board, and one-time president of that organization as well. And I have been a subscriber with my husband to the Ensemble Theater for close to 30 years. So needless to say, we are theater lovers. The Ensemble has made a significant contribution to the cultural scene in this town for over 30 years, and as a professional theater doing first-class performances from cramped, inadequate facilities. It is time for us to move and grow. The expanded Victoria Theater will allow us to do just that. The study of needs assessment for the Granada Theater stressed the need in this city for a 300-seat theater. The Victoria would fulfill that goal. It is also consistent with council's goals of reusing existing facilities, rather than building a new and tearing, or tearing things down. It would bring added business to the area. It would bring added vitality to this city. And certainly, we need an emphasis on cultural life as well as physical facilities. I note that on the whole long list of projects, only the Cultural Arts Workshop and our project serve the arts. The rest of it is all bricks and mortar, which is fine. But we need also to consider the cultural life of this city. It's what makes us want to live here. It's what makes visitors want to come here, and it's a very important part of life in Santa Barbara. So I urge your retention of the $1 million for the Ensemble. So I urge your retention of the $1 million for the Ensemble Theater grant and look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecilia Rodriguez will be followed by Steve Mensch.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of the committee. I'm Cecilia Rodriguez, and I'm the Executive Director of COM. At COM is one of the three co-owners of the Victoria Street Building, and I'm here to urge your support for the Ensemble Theater grant. Over the last couple of years, I have watched, and my board has watched, as Ensemble has gone through its meticulous planning process. They have been thorough and considerate and very planful, and my board and I fully support this project. We think it is good for Santa Barbara, it's good for our building, and good for our little corner on Victoria and Chapala Streets, which I think will be greatly enhanced by this project. So I would urge you, my board of 30 community members, and I fully support this project and are urging you to continue your funding for this. Thank you.
Steve Mensch will be followed by Laura Ings.
Good morning. My name's Steve Mensch. I'm an architect, and I'm on the board of the Ensemble Theater. About 20 years ago, this board set in place a plan for theaters in the downtown district. You now have a unique opportunity to actually finish a plan. Thank you.
I liked that. That was right there. That was good. Laura Ings will be followed by Alan Macy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and esteemed board members. In my position as Director of Education at the Granada Theater, I am charged with and concerned with the education programs of the opera, the symphony, the ballet, the Choral Society, UCSB Arts and Lectures, Theater, and the Theater League. Also with that, I am on the board of the Santa Barbara Arts Collaborative, and I am facilitating a new collaborative called the Santa Barbara Music Collab, which is endeavoring to bring the industry from the south and the technology geeks from the north together to make Santa Barbara that hub where we can really be the west coast music spot. In addition to that, I've been doing some research, and the President's Committee on Arts Education has just released a report that calls for reinvestment in art education. And in this competitive global market, I believe that Santa Barbara can go beyond tourism, the tourism culture, to a creative culture. And this also would be like a creative class that would be sort of between the haves and have-nots that we have here in Santa Barbara. And I think by bringing in more arts and supporting the two items before you today in the arts, we can be, become the leaders on the west coast in innovation and creativity and bring a vitality to Santa Barbara that already exists, but more people need to know about it, and more people will come. So I urge you to help with the Community Arts Workshop and the backstage of all the organizations and small organizations that need rehearsal space, showing space, places to make art, places to bring children in to make art, and also for the Ensemble Theater project, which we do need for all the smaller groups to have a place to perform. Thank you.
Alan Macy will be followed by Leslie Wiscombe.
Madam Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Alan Macy. I'm a 30-year UCSB graduate and subsequent 30-year resident of the city of Santa Barbara and also founder of, and continue to work at, a local biotech firm for about 25 years. There is a budding possibility of helping craft a beautiful and functional entry into Santa Barbara via the gateway of Garden Street. Presently along Lower Garden Street is the area historically known as Soco, South Dakota, and there is a sprinkling of architects and creative businesses there. Continued funding to secure the final development of the Community Arts Workshop, home of the Solstice Parade, one block up, Garden from Art From Scrap, would help secure the vision of an arts corridor along Lower Garden Street. Thank you.
Leslie Wiscombe will be followed by Eric Lassen.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Agency Board Members. I'm Leslie Wiscombe, Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission. The Commission is concerned about the long list of unfunded deferred maintenance capital projects. We believe the city needs to invest in our parks and recreation facilities before they become so degraded that they are rendered unsafe or unpleasant places to visit. Some are already becoming so. Given the constraints on the general fund and increasingly limited grant opportunities, the Commission urges the board to make parks and recreation projects a high priority for RDA funding. These projects represent our city's future in many ways. Hundreds of children in our community visit our parks and playgrounds each week. As well, many tourists use our facilities and impressions are formed from their visits. Will they return to visit again? The Cabrillo Arts Pavilion and Bath House, built in 1926, continues to serve hundreds of thousands of beachgoers, volleyball players, junior lifeguard programs, and community events each year. It continues to be stressed by use, and renovation is required to serve these needs in the future. The Cabrillo Ball Field is a community priority. In our February 2011 Commission meeting, business owners and residents in the Milpus neighborhood spoke with excitement about potential improvements and recreational amenities to better serve the neighborhood and our community. Cabrillo Vault Field is also one gateway to our city. Visitors see it as they travel the Cabrillo Corridor. With funding, improvements may alleviate problems that have plagued the Milpus neighborhood for so long and become a vibrant place that returns ownership of the park to our residents. These are very important projects for our city's present and future. Please consider these projects for RDA funding. Thank you.
Eric Lassen will be followed by Rod Hare.
Good morning. My name is Eric Lassen. I'm a member of the Solstice Board, I think for about 25 years, and other arts-related organizations, in particular the County Bowl, or County Bowl Foundation. I'm speaking here this morning about the Community Arts Workshop, which is kind of dear to me, and I wanted to simply thank the Redevelopment Agency for supporting that in the past, and I urge that you continue to do that in the future. Other people have spoken already about the many needs, and I certainly believe that that's true. It's certainly something that's important for Solstice, but it's the whole arts community, the performing arts community that will be able to use this facility over the years, and I think it's very important. So I want to thank you very much for your time on it.
Rod Hare will be followed by Jill Cloutier.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Rod Hare, and I'm the President of the Board of the Santa Barbara Arts Collaborative, here to speak in support of the Community Arts Workshop. I'll admit that my internal clock is not calibrated to speak for two minutes, so I'll just look for the stern look to know that I'm done. So, about four years ago, I began serving on what was then called the Art Sustainability Task Force. Many of you may remember this, and the focus of that was to develop new models for economic sustainability for artists and arts organizations in town, as well as to begin facilitating collaboration among all of the arts. That has become a nonprofit now called the Santa Barbara Arts Collaborative. We have a board, we have an advisory board, something like 1,500 members now in Santa Barbara, artists and art supporters. And during that four years, we have collaborated with just about every arts organization in town in one way or another. And today, I'm here to just build on what's already been said, the importance of the Community Arts Workshop. About a year ago, a task force was formed. We recognized an opportunity, which was to finally, once and for all, make a permanent home for Solstice in Santa Barbara. Two months of the year, they will always have a place, they know they have, and the other 10 months of the year, there'll be this resource for artists and arts organizations, whether it's rehearsal space, performance space, whether it's set design, you know, gallery space, whatever you can imagine. So the Arts Collaborative has stepped up, and we've done a community needs assessment, reaching out to arts organizations throughout the community. There's a business plan in place. Some of you have had a chance to see it, you will all have a chance to see it soon. We're ready to step up and actually make this happen. These funds have been committed for a long time. I'm the newcomer here. Many people have been at this for decades trying to see this happen. You've heard from them, and we'll hear from more of them, but I'm here to speak in support of let's finally bring this home and make this a reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eight seconds to spare even. Look at that. Jill will be followed by Ginny Brush.
I'm Jill Cloutier. I feel like I'm on the dating game, all of you looking at me. Anyway, I'm here from Art From Scrap, and we just wanted, everyone's kind of said what I was going to say, so I'll make it short, but we wanted to show our support for the Community Arts Workshop. We think it's very vital to have a center, an art center, in downtown Santa Barbara. It would benefit the city artistically, economically, for all the reasons everyone else has said. And we are really excited about having Art From Scrap located there, and Alan Macy and Laura Ings' group, and we really support Solstice as well. So just wanted to go on the record for Art From Scrap definitely supports Community Arts Workshop. Thanks.
Ginny Brush will be followed by Clay Bodine.
Mayor Schneider, members of the Redevelopment Agency Board, I'm here today representing the Arts Commission, City, and the City Arts Advisory, and those that we serve to speak in support of several Agency Board projects, and to acknowledge the invaluable contributions Agency funds and project, and capital projects have had in improving economic vitality, community development, and the quality of life for local residents over the last 20 years. As you may remember, in 1980, the downtown core of Santa Barbara was quite different. The city of Santa Barbara worked closely at that time with the Arts Commission, consultants, and a dedicated group of students and civic leaders to develop a regional arts master plan. That plan was an outline of goals and actions designed to make Santa Barbara a world-class cultural arts destination, and leveraged the city's rich tradition of arts and culture to serve as a significant driver of the economy while improving quality of life for the residents. That vision of a vibrant cultural arts district more than 20 years ago is now close to being a reality. The impact of Redevelopment Agency funds can be seen from the pedestrian improvements along Cabrillo Boulevard, Paseo Nuevo, Contemporary Arts Forum, Center Stage Theater, the Libero, Granada, you've heard about a lot of them, and the recently completed Arts and Cultural Center at the upper end of the cultural district at Solace Street. The general ambiance of State Street, projects like the State of the Art Gallery, the storefront gallery during the economic downturn, and the development even of First Thursday Program were all made possible with funding support from the City Redevelopment Agency. If you've been involved in First Thursday or to any event at the Granada, you know how arts and culture have served to engage the community and revitalize the economy. In 2007, we, the Arts Commission, participated in Americans for the Arts Survey. That survey identified that cultural groups generated $77.6 million to the local economic, with local economic activity. Last year, recognizing that the Redevelopment Agency Board was set to sunset, in 2015, the Arts Commission worked with the Arts Collaborative in developing a community needs assessment to identify what remaining issues and needs had not been met.
You do need to wind up.
Okay. Okay. It was the 300-seat theater that you've heard about, the Community Arts Workshop space. I urge you to listen to what the, the large amount of community support you have and recognize the need for Library Plaza, the Community Arts Workshop space, and Victoria Theater. Thank you.
Thank you. Clay Bodine will be followed by Gerald Jackman, and the final speaker will be BB Longstreet.
Good morning, council members. My name is Clay Bodine, and I'm an artistic or creative director who moved to Santa Barbara 11 years ago from Chicago. And one of the first things that I experienced when I moved to Santa Barbara was the Solstice Parade. I think the first person that I met mentioned the Solstice Parade, and it was, I was a creative person, and this seemed like an obvious thing to be involved with. And actually, the next year, I became the Artistic Director of Solstice for one year, and I was a guest artist for the following year. And I thought to myself, I've never seen anything like this ever before in my life. I've been doing creative work for 30-some years, and the inclusiveness and the skill-sharing, the things that, the energy and the excitement that went on at the Solstice Workshop was just something that I'd never experienced before. And I thought to myself, why is this only happened two months out of the year? How come this doesn't happen year-round? And then I was aware of the Community Arts Workshop as actually the program that would make that happen. And since it wasn't happening 11 years ago, I created an organization called Fishbone, which is an artist collaborative, and we do a lot of the same things and follow kind of the Solstice model, but I learned at Solstice. And so I would probably support the Solstice effort and the Community Arts Workshop, and also the Ensemble Theater project as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Gerald Jackman.
Good morning. My name is Gerald Jackman. I'm Executive Director of the Santa Barbara Trust for Historic Preservation. I'm here in support of the $1 million for Ensemble. That money was reprogrammed to the Santa Barbara Trust for Historic Preservation several years back, but it was for Ensemble, because we are the managers of the property, and so the money had to come through us. It was always intended for their use, and at that moment, it looked like they might be staying in the Ensemble Theater, so that money would have been used for that purpose. But they have now found a new location, have a great team with Derek and Steve Mensch and Jonathan, and they're going to make this happen, and I'm really very pleased for them. I just wanted to confirm that the trust very much supports this money going to that purpose, because that was its original purpose. I would also like to add that if there's any money that trickles down from other projects-
I was waiting for that.
That we have a Northwest Corner, the trust is coming up on its 50th anniversary in 2013, and we would like to finish that, so. But this money is their money to the trust mind, and we look forward to them completing the theater and going into their new location. We've enjoyed very much having them as tenants. They've been there since I've been there, and I've been there 30 years.
Right. Mr. Jackman, actually, what's the budget for the Northwest Corner? Do you have one?
It's 700 to complete.
700,000?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. BB Longstreet will be the final speaker.
I'm BB Longstreet, and I've been on the Parks and Recreation Commission now for 16 years, and prior to that, I did eight years on the Lower West Side Advisory Committee. So I've seen the benefits of the RDA money to the Parks and Recreation Department, to the community, and I've also seen the decline in our facilities and the need. The need just keeps getting greater. I think we all saw that with the Infrastructure Task Force work, and it continues to be an RDA money has brought us Chase Palm Park expansion, Parque de los Niños, and many wonderful facilities that are the face of our community. These not only benefit our residents, but they, they present us to the people who come and visit, and we need to keep them up. We need to make sure that places like the Cabrillo Rec. Center, the Cabrillo Art Center, where we have many weddings, destination weddings, these are all things that generate income also, that they continue to be the important, not only in today, but for the future, for our children to go to. Every year, it's been the same. You know, we've been fighting to keep up our facilities. The times are tough, and I think we need to look inward as a city and maintain what we own first, and make sure that it's available for our children. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. So-
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Casey.
If I might just suggest a process for kind of focusing your deliberation and discussion, I think our recommendation would be is start with Attachment 1, which is the current capital list. Confirm it or make any adjustments that you see fit, but stay focused on that, make some decisions, and then spend the remainder of your time focused on the future projected list.
Great. That was what I was thinking, I guess. I guess the, I guess the first thing is maybe just to start seeing if there's consensus, looking at the construction items up, and then there were three items that are already contracted, right? Four? There, the Visitor Center condominium purchase, the Lower State Street sidewalks, the Chase Palm Park, Wisteria, no, yes, Wisteria-Arborum, which one's the fourth one?
You're correct, actually, and you're-
Three.
It's four, or it's three, but the Helena Parking Lot is already under, is in the construction phase, so, thanks.
Okay. So do we want to just start there, and if there's consensus to keep those items on, unless there's some objection you want to talk about, and then we can go on the rest, we can work on the rest of the list? Ms. Elf?
Yes. I see also in our presentation, it was authorizing the transfer of the $1.6 million to the Police Department. So would that be included?
That would be, I think-
Later?
Yeah. And I think we'll probably get there, but I just thought this would be the easy stuff first.
I want to keep in-
Yeah.
A before B. Thank you.
So maybe just start there. Is there anyone who wants to do something other than that for now, in terms of, I mean, just first step of keeping construction section and then- just first step of keeping construction section, and then the three listed, to keep those on the list? Are we okay with that, under consensus? Okay. So, that's, that part done. Now, anything else on Attachment 1? And maybe, maybe Ms. Self, you want to bring that up now, in terms of, that was the recommendation, right? To bring the remaining funding from completed capital projects, and the bottom three miscellaneous, the Opportunity Acquisition Fund, the Housing Fund Contingency Account, and the RDA Project Contingency Account, and put that in the police headquarters.
Madam Mayor, yes, that's correct. And on Attachment 2, it's kind of all combined together with a total of $13 million that we're recommending you add to the Police Department budget, in addition to the existing $7 million, so that you come up with a total of $20 million.
Okay. So, moving that over to, so basically, that 1.6, we can move over to Attachment 2.
It's already included in that 13.
And when we talk about Attachment 2, we can figure that out.
Exactly.
Okay. So, I think that's how we'll do that. Okay. So, anything else on Attachment 1 that you want to talk about? Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question for Mr. Casey. Anything we do with Parks and Recreation, is that limited to the RDA area?
Yes. Yeah. Madam Mayor and Agency member Rouse, yes. Capital dollars need to be spent within the Redevelopment Agency capital area, and so that's why our focus has been on Parks and Recreation opportunities within the Redevelopment Agency project area.
Kind of want to get that there for the public as well. Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, just the, the, I would say, one of the items that I keep hearing feedback on is the library renovation, which, Plaza renovation, which nobody disputes is needed, but the, the dollar figure kind of raises, seems to raise collective eyebrows. And I know that the $2 million-
Right. Which is Attachment 2.
Well, it's, it's also mentioned in the conceptual, oh, you were talking about conceptual design-
Correct.
Here. So, it's in Attachment 1 as well.
Well, it's $184,000 in Attachment 1. That's just for the design. But if we want to lower the construction, or does, or do the two, I think, I hear what you're saying, Mr. White, are the two then, would that give you, if we wanted to lower the $2 million on Attachment 2, does that then redirect what you do in terms of the design? Or you can still keep the 184? Okay. Yes, Mr. Casey?
We're under contract with a design firm who's just now beginning the work on designing the Library Plaza. And so, if you want to go forward with the design, I think I would leave the Attachment 1 dollar amount alone. If you wanted to kind of set a future policy direction about how much you want to spend on the, on the physical improvements, right now, the preliminary estimate is approximately $2 million. If you wanted to change that, you could do that, and that would certainly help inform the design process going forward about what the scope of the project needs to be.
I would appreciate having, the council having that conversation at some point. It just feels like a, a bigger number than it needs to, it needs to be. And even when we discussed it previously, I think there was that vibe going around. Wow, that's a big number, and can it not be done for less? And so, we're just, that's just one to watch very, very closely, to say, gosh, you know, what are there going to be some options that might come in substantially under that? So, that's, just to have that as part of, of what the design team is looking at, I think would be important. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anything else on Attachment 1 that you want to rearrange? Or am I here, yes, Mr. Hotchkiss?
I got a question. Is the, I don't know what to call it, the art gateway on Cabrillo Ball Field included anywhere here?
Oh, the-
That one or two, was that-
Madam Chair, Agency Board Member Hotchkiss, that would be part of, on Attachment 2, your Cabrillo Ball Field renovation, that would be inclusive of that particular project? It's that whole-
The chromatic gate you're talking about?
It needs repainting and all that.
The chromatic gate, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the maintenance. And so, that would, our thought would be that it would be tied into that larger Cabrillo Ball Fields project.
Is that a funded or unfunded project?
That's recommended for future funding, and is currently, at this time, unfunded.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on Attachment 1? Okay. Do we want then a motion to keep Attachment 1 as-is, knowing that we're moving those extra monies over to Attachment 2?
I'll move that, Madam Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That means Ensemble Theater, you're still on that list, so everyone there for that is, that's, that's good news, right? Okay. I have to, I just want to mention, my very first meeting, when I first got sworn in as a city council member, was with Ellie Langer, and I forget who else, about the Ensemble Theater. So, and it was one of those things where I'm looking at plans, I'm thinking, what am I supposed to do with this? And now I know. Now it's to give you money, and to make sure it happens. So, congratulations, and we move forward to that. Okay. Item, so, not item, but Attachment 2. I guess the first way to go is to look at the recommendation for future funding, and maybe we can talk about that $2 million and other things for the library project, and then, or if we want to move unfunded stuff into the, any changes, I guess, in, in Attachment 2.
Correct. Madam Mayor, if I could just frame this one more time, and then also ask if there's any interest. Would you like us to walk through the recommended funding projects, or do you have a good handle on that? So, that's one question for the board. And then, right, this is staff's recommendation, is that based upon prior direction and discussion, that the yellow shaded area is the priority, but this is the opportunity to say yes or no. And then the bottom list is what we feel is kind of the second tier priorities, that unfortunately, we don't have money to do, and it's your opportunity to say, wait a second, I'd like to move something up or down. So, two questions. One, would you like us to walk through, just in very brief detail, the projects that are on the recommended list or not, and then go from there?
Yes, or?
I, I would.
Okay. Why don't we do that? And if you could, at some point, I do want to get back to the Mesa steps and the money if we're shifting, and how we're going to do that. I want to get that resolved before we adjourn today.
Maybe I can just mention on the Mesa steps. Our recommendation is, is rather than allocate $200,000 of money at this point, since it's speculative whether or not we'll receive the grant, is when we apply for the grant, it will be our intention to note that the city council has authorized that if we receive the grant, we would, we would apply $200,000 of matching funds at that point. And then it would either come out of appropriated reserve, could come out of that capital reserve that we have in the reserve. But I think to, it's, it's probably a 50-50 chance on the grant, to say at this point, let's take $200,000 and allocate it for it. Instead, I think if we just, you know that we're going to say that we're, that it's such an important project that we're willing to commit $200,000.
And will that be part of the final budget presentation on the 21st?
We can put that in there, so there's some-
Do you need a direction from us to do that, or do you think you got it?
You see the adopted bud, or the recommended budget on the 21st will have something in there.
Okay. All right. So, that's taken care of.
Does that work for the council?
Is that, okay with, okay, good. Mesa steps. Go, go get a grant. Okay. All right. Okay. So, Mr. Casey or Mr. Bossy, if you want to go through the list?
Madam Chair, Agency Board Members, I'll run through this list for you, top to bottom. At the top of the list, you see additional funding for the Police Department building construction. At, the funding request is for $13 million. It's that, and also included in that is that 1.622, as well as the 1.5 million that we mentioned earlier. So, that's part of that. Next is the Cabrillo Pavilion Art Center renovation. Right now, we are working, or actually, Parks and Public Works and Redevelopment Agency staff are working on the assessment of the building, seeing what is actually there, what needs improvement. We know it needs improvement, but exactly dialing in what, what we need to do out there. So, that has already been funded by your board. Downtown-
Excuse me, just say, is that just renovations, or is there some redesign or re-tasking, as it were, or what?
Madam Chair, Agency Board Member Hotchkiss, that's a great question. It is both a building assessment, to see what is out there electrically, physically, the building itself, but also a business plan, to look at how to better utilize that space. As you know, there's a lot of underutilized space, how to make it better for Parks for the future. It's an important structure, and just how to, how to capitalize on it.
Do you, I'm noticing the attachment that came with the Council Agenda Report is different than what we're seeing up here. But you're, okay, so, we should just adjust, you don't have cop-
I do not have copies. Sorry. This was last night, this morning.
We were just making notes on this one. Got it. Got it. All right. We'll be flexible.
Madam Mayor, just on the first two, just a little kind of thought process that we went through. First, as you know, there's $7 million on the first attachment for the police building, and this would make it $20 million. And this is consistent with what your subcommittee on the police facility, with the concept that RDA would come up with 20 million, and then we're going to have to find the additional 30 million, assuming it's a $50 million project. And then on, the reason that the Cabrillo Arts Pavilion is on that list is, we've got serious infrastructure issues there. If you go and look at that building carefully, there's a lot of concrete spalling and just kind of fundamental issues, and we felt that we're going to need to deal with that project. And, and so that's why it was an important one for staff to, to put this much money for, because it's, it is a lot of money.
The only other change with what I'm looking at here also is you moved downtown sidewalks up. Is that the only one? Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's correct. Third on your list is downtown sidewalk improvements. That's the project you just mentioned. That is improvements on the side streets of State Street, Ortega, Cota, and Haley, from Chapala Street over to the project area boundaries at Santa Barbara Street. Next, you have Library Plaza, which was mentioned earlier. We do have, the Agency Board has funded the design for that, and that's currently underway. That's at $2 million. Of course, that could be lessened upon your request. Lower Milpiss pedestrian improvements, as I mentioned earlier, sidewalks, lighting and landscape improvements along Lower Milpiss, Cabrillo Ball Fields, additional improvements in lighting to, to the Cabrillo Ball Fields, including restrooms, programming, and things of that nature, and the chromatic gate. West downtown neighborhood lighting project phases 2 and 3. Phase 1 has already been funded by the Redevelopment Agency Board. This would take that out. The whole project has been designed, so this would implement the construction components of that, and really improve the safety of the Lower West Downtown.
Is that just lighting?
Madam Chair, Council Member Hotchkiss, yes. Yes, just lighting. Next is library renovation. That is supplementing funds for the library, for the children's section and the lower level, at $550,000. That was requested, obviously, by the library department. You have the Community Arts Workshop. That is currently funded at, to little, to the tune of a little over $500,000. This would be an additional $500,000 to make it roughly $1 million with the Arts Collaborative, then raising the remainder of that, which is about, anywhere between a million and a million and a half dollars they would raise. Next is RDA parking lot upgrades at 235 State Street. These are upgrades to the Redevelopment Agency-owned lot next to Enterprise Fish Company, was purchased a number of years ago, is from Caltrans, bringing it up to city code. East and West Beach Play-
Is that a public lot now? Is it public access?
Madam Chair and Agency Board Member, Agents Board Member Hotchkiss, yes. And it has been public ever since we acquired it. It's a 75-minute parking lot. So, it's not gated, but it's, everybody can pull in. You got your standard 75 minutes.
Didn't know that. Thank you.
East and West Beach Playground Replacement. Well, that pretty explains itself, and that is the $350,000. Chase Palm Park Renovation. Right now, Parks is out there with Redevelopment Agency funding, doing electrical and lighting and making it better for all the, the programs that are down there, including the summer music series. This would go beyond that and look at restrooms and ADA compliance and a number of other issues.
Does, does this also restore the sale art, where the stages, you know, those were taken down and?
Yes.
Yes? Okay.
That would be part of it.
Where the, where the stages?
The sales structure, yes.
So, it's bringing that back?
Correct.
Okay.
In some form, yes. Next is the Chase Palm Park Playground Replacement. And lastly, and that's at $200,000. And lastly on our list is the Waterfront Sandage Program at $25,000. So, that's the list of proposed projects that we have for you to start your discussion with.
Start, well, actually, I, I'd like to go through the whole list, in case we want to move things around, but first, are there questions on the first part? Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Boss, the chromatic gate, when that was put in initially, wasn't there a private foundation that was going to fund and maintain that and paint that? As I recall?
Ms. Brushes can answer that.
Ginny Brush staff to City Arts Advisory. Yes, there was. And I can tell you, my first year at the Arts Commission, I actually was responsible for making sure that it got repainted. It was repainted with those funds, working with Parks Department to the tune of about $10,000. The remaining funds in that initial, the amount of money set aside for the restoration, I think was left at about $1,500 after that. City Arts Advisory and VAP have been working to develop an art maintenance fund, and so we've, we've been raising some money for that, also through the sale of the public art DVD. That was part of the intention, was to make people more aware of these projects. But I, I can say, one thing is that this is a nationwide problem. Art that was designed and put in, there was never really the right amount of money or the vision for the significant impact of the maintenance of public art. This is one reason we're working on a cultural arts master plan that would address these kinds of issues. And again, this is something that's happening with agencies throughout the country, basically. And I will say that Rita Ferry, our visual arts coordinator, has been working very diligently to try to find some private funding support for the restoration of the gate, and it's estimated, I believe, to be in the neighborhood of $35,000 to $40,000.
Thank you. And then, and thank you, Janie, appreciate that. And then, Mr. Bossy, on the RDA parking lot. At one point in time, we were talking about the possibility of, of moving Greyhound there. Is there any, are there any transit conceptual things that are still thought about for that area, or is that strictly going to remain a parking lot? Or do, what do we have, any, any plans for that, along those lines?
Madam Chair and C Board Member Rouse, I think we're always willing to entertain possible ideas for the Train Depot area. Of course, you know, it's been, the idea behind the whole Train Depot campus has been the multimodal concept, and if we can incorporate rail and, and other ideas, we will do that. And we are currently in negotiations for the REA building, which is where open-air bicycles used to be, which would lend to that multimodal perspective.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the first half up here? Okay. Mr. Bossy, if you'd like to go over the second part.
Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to. Working our way down to the, what we have is remaining unfunded projects. The first is Chapala Street corridor improvements. I mentioned that earlier. They would be in concert with the current Chapala Street Streetscape Design Guidelines. The Laguna Pump Station channel facilities upgrades. These are upgrades to the tune of $1.3 million for our Laguna Pump Station down on the, the ocean side of Cabrillo Boulevard. At Mr. Kelly's request earlier, we can take off the Mason Street Bridge component. Next is parking structure number 10, public restroom. That would be for a new public restroom at parking lot 10, off the Paseo, in the back by the winding staircase. That's at least where we think would be a logical place for that. Next is the Mission Lagoon Restoration, again, down on our waterfront. Then you have the Cota Street Bridge at Mission Creek, and that would be at $430,000. Lower Mission Creek Historic Study. That would be a project of $370,000, looking at the, performing a historic study for the lower component of Mission Creek. Then you have De Lavina and Figaro intersection improvements at $350,000. Followed right behind that is De Lavina, Cannon Perdito intersection improvements at $350,000. And real quickly, I just want to say, the overall list is just based on funding. It's not based on any priority level. We just grouped it as most expensive to least. Next is parking lot two, Paseo improvements. Parking lot two is across from Nordstrom's. That's the Paseo that runs in an L shape behind the Canary and the Jim. Access ramps in the project area at $300,000. Parking structure number seven, which is the library, that would be used for ADA improvements at that particular structure. Parking structure number 10, Paseo improvements. That's the parking structure off of Ortega, so the Paseo, again, by Hamburger Habit and Dargans and behind the movie theater. Haley-Anicapa intersection improvements at $150,000. Downtown street lighting plan, that would be for our facilities folks to go out and, not the lower west town, but really look at the downtown core as a whole and where there is lighting. There were some issues that were brought up a few years ago with lighting adjacent to the courthouse, or I should say, a lack of lighting adjacent to the courthouse. So that's, it would go out and look at those and really look at what needed to be done for lighting in the downtown. Then we have redevelopment agency community grant process for fiscal year 2012, and we could go beyond that as well. In the past, when the state wasn't after our money as much, the Agency Board had made funding available for local community organizations. And last on that list is affordable housing activities, additional funding for those. As you know, they, affordable housing received 20% of the overall tax increment, and this would be in addition to that. And that sums up your list, your final list.
I have a question, Mr. Kelly, for Mr. Kelly. Similar to the Mason Street Bridge, is the Cota Street Bridge at Mission Creek also funded, or is that still something that needs funding?
Agency Board, that is something that still needs to be funded.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Francisco?
This may be a question for Mr. Kelly as well, I don't know. Could you describe in a little more detail what the scope of the Haley-Anicapa intersection improvements would be? I mean, I can imagine, you know, given the difficulties there with pedestrian crossings and everything, but...
Just a minute, please. Off the top of my head, I believe that was, again, another, yes, this is not current any longer.
It isn't?
So that would be something in the same category as the Mason Street Bridge.
Okay. Thank you.
So that can be taken off. The Laguna pump station, are we applying for Prop 84 funds or, do you need to correct something? Go ahead, Mr. Kelly.
I said a different intersection. That is one that I'd need to talk with our Transportation Division to get more detail.
Is Ana Cappa-Haley you're talking about?
Exactly.
So that's still potentially needing funding?
Yes, please. I apologize.
No, that's no problem. Thank you.
So back to the Laguna pump station. There's all sorts of funding related to beach restoration and Measure B, and, I mean, what exactly, because there's a flooding issue here, you know, can you give me a little more information about that?
Agency Board, is that, I'm familiar with that, and that is a combination of an improvement requested by Public Works Engineering, Public Works Streets Maintenance, who maintains the site in coordination with Creeks. That the focus of this improvement is to improve the maintainability and potentially the flood-carrying capacity of that facility, as well as coordinate with the lagoon work that the Creeks Division has requested.
Is it eligible for Measure B funding? Wouldn't it be, or no?
Creeks would be the best to focus on that, but in past requests is that this is primarily focused as a infrastructure maintenance issue rather than a water quality restoration issue. This, the $1.3 million facility-
Ms. Zachary is standing up too, perhaps, if you want to. Thank you.
Agency Board, the Mission Laguna, Lagoon, Laguna Channel pump station, that whole area is something that Creeks Division, Public Works, the waterfront department, Parks and Recreation are trying to look at comprehensively. And so you can't look at one part without looking at the other. I think it's in the conceptual stage as to what really could happen there from a flood control standpoint, aesthetic improvements, recreation, water quality, habitat, and also in consideration of the surrounding businesses, and it's a popular area for Santa Barbara. Implementation of the project will probably require funding from a variety of sources. Something related to mechanical operations of the pump house and the channel could be something, that could be a flood control-related grant opportunity. And there is still funding at the state and federal level for those types of projects. So I think our objective, and we're just beginning to put together an RFP to do some conceptual discussions, would be to look at a broad base of funding and fit different parts of the project accordingly to what would be funded by different agencies.
Do you think, looking into outside grants, that we'd be much more competitive if we did allocate at least some money from RDA to this project, or does that matter?
I think for grant applications, Madam Chair and members of the Agency Board, for grant applications, there's two things to think about. The designing and permitting of a project's critical to get funded by the agency, because that then tells a granting agency that the agency is committed to it financially, has approved it, given it environmental review, and that provides a lot of the leverage to get construction-related grants. So in short, yes. How much, I couldn't answer. It really depends on the grant source.
So, and then back to Mr. Kelly, is that $1.3 million the total project cost, or is that a portion, no, I mean, for this piece of it, or?
The $1.3 million is focused on the flood control facility, and especially the, the project description is maintenance repairs to the pump station, including a new engine enclosure roof, repair to the station's masonry walls, and channel repairs. And very importantly is the replacement of the metal debris rack, which is a very important issue as part of the functionality and reliability of the operation of that facility during flood occasions, where you want to have that debris rack functional and clean so that the pumps that are there can operate, and it's a big challenge.
Okay.
And just miscellaneous other upgrades, but primarily, the biggest cost of that $1.3 million will be the debris rack and channel repairs. And in coordination with the interests of the items that Jill had talked about, which is nearby.
Right, okay. I guess, I'm just asking these questions, looking at, because it's unfunded at the moment. $1.3 is a big number. If there was, is, does it help us in the long term if we did some or all of that in terms of getting something accomplished with grant funding or other pieces? And I was just trying to get the bigger picture there.
And Madam Mayor, I might comment on that, because this has been, as I think you know, when we have high tides and it rains heavily, we get flood back up all the way, Gutierrez where the United Way is, where the hardware store is, serious flooding. In fact, if you look at some of the buildings there, they actually have flood gates on their entrances because the flooding is so bad. And we've made a lot of improvements here, but we still have a long ways to go, and I think what we're, to me, this is, if there's any of my kind of favorite projects that we could move up, this is one, because this primarily just covers the improvement of the flood, you know, the flood capacity and improving that facility, which is, right now, every time it rains, we have to, we literally assign personnel to be there the entire time to work that pump, and it's still kind of a Roob Goldberg kind of system, even with the improvements we've made. And so, and I think the project with Mission Creek is a much bigger project, this probably helps us, but we also just have a real flood hazard there.
Okay. Thank you for all of that. Mr. House?
Just on a follow-up on that conversation a little bit, it sounds like there are a variety of interests in the same area. Obviously, this, the pump itself and the gates, and yet, it's, and there would be, and what Ms. Zachary is talking about, there seems like there's a variety of interests, possibly a variety of funding sources, all of which would be enhanced, our ability to achieve those grants would be enhanced if we had a, had done the homework of a, of kind of a comprehensive plan for that area. And not to, you know, plan to plan, it's more like a plan to implement so that when we see the opportunities, we're ready for it. Project study report level, but maybe, maybe not, maybe a little bit back from that. How do the, is there any benefit, and I don't know to whom to address this, because it seems like there's different, you know, areas of responsibility, of really taking a look at what's the plan for the Laguna Channel, including both the pump and the water quality and the health and all these other issues that, wouldn't that be a useful tool for all of the potential funding sources and to achieve these different opportunities as they arise?
Go ahead. There you go.
Madam Chair, Agency Board Members, I may not have explained it adequately in my first response to the question. The intent of the first phase of the project, to do the conceptual planning, is to look at it comprehensively, because we can't look at one without looking at the other, and that is a work effort-
And that would include the things Mr. Kelly's talking about, as well as the things you're talking about?
Yes.
And so what we don't see here is a much more, a more modest dollar amount for that part of the process. We see the one piece, which has to do with the pump and the gates. We don't get a chance to see a number that maybe we could achieve today that would allow us to move that plan forward. Or do you already have it funded? Maybe I'm missing, maybe that's what I'm missing.
Madam Chair, Agency Board Member House, we currently do have some funding set aside in the Creeks Division capital program for that level effort. I don't have that number yet. We haven't issued the RFP, so we don't exactly what it will cost, but it's essentially the concept-first phase technical studies, the standard work effort that you do when you're beginning to define a project before you go into preliminary design and permitting. So I don't, we do have funding in the capital program for Measure B. I don't have that number right now.
And how does that tie in with the kind of project that would not be Measure B funded, like what Mr. Kelly's talking about? And is there something then, and Mr. Kelly, you could help us here, is there something there that needs to be in here that would be a preliminary version of the kind of study that would set us up for future achievement of this Laguna pump improvement?
Agency Board, is that I don't have the cost breakdown of the $1.3 million, but I can speak to the studies that have been done in the past. In fact, we've been doing studies pretty much since 1995, as far as, you know, what can we do to improve the functionality of flood protection in that part of town? Because as you look at some old maps, essentially, that's the oldest estero. So it's a difficult challenge, and we've gone through a significant amount of alternative and option study to come up with this facility here is the best facility that we can use to effectively maintain the flood, reduce the flood probability in that area. And of that $1.3 million, I think what you're looking for is, can we, that's a big amount of money. Is there something that we can move forward that is less, that can be very effective? And I would say yes. But I don't have the exact breakdown, but I, and which I can provide in the future. However, I can say that, from my perspective, is that if we could fund the enhancement of the debris racks and do some reconstruction of the channel, that would be in coordination with some Creeks goals, that would be a significant benefit, and I would be very happy with $750,000.
Thank you. That's, that's the number we're looking for.
Thank you very much for helping us get there.
I'll also just-
It's terrific, but I can say I'll be very happy.
So half. Another way to look at it, and so there's a 750 option, I'll just throw out there just for consideration, not that I'm saying let's go for it, but going back to Mr. White's point on the $2 million to the Library Plaza, another way to fund the full $1.3 is if we, it would affect the police building construction. If we went down just half a million there and go to $12.5, and then go down to $1.3 on the Library Plaza, that'll be another $700,000. That would pay for, oh, no, I'm getting my math wrong, so the seven, you need a little, no, that's right. That's right. That's another way of doing it. It, you know, so that would take care of this issue with the Library Plaza, it's still $1.3 million. It's not the full two, and you could reallocate that to this project. That's another way of looking at it. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Several comments that I was going to make, there, some good discussions occurred here. I walked that Cabrillo Boulevard many days a week, and that Laguna Channel has been one of those things that just, it's just so troubling. And I would appreciate this, this council getting the, a little tutorial on that system, just, I mean, the flood hazard, and then work our way down to the coast. I think that we'd all benefit from just having, having that understanding. I mean, the cost of just the electricity of that thing has to be, that's got to be one of the big electricity bills of our, of our city, and just that we should be dealing with. So I would appreciate us hearing about that. I really also appreciate that there's creative effort to keep that health and safety project. I mean, out of this, all this RDA stuff, some of it's beauty and some of it is health and safety, and this is clearly a health and safety piece of it, and it's a very important one to look at. And the other one was the Cota Street Bridge. Does that, the loss of that funding, does that mean that that, I mean, I keep looking at those 87.5% grants that we're getting on Mission, oh, I want to back up a second. The Mission Creek project, we've been working on that my entire experience of being involved with the city, which is now 28 years, we've been working on Mission Creek. It's just been one of those things where we've, and we've been banging on it and chewing on it, and by God, some things are happening. Miraculous. And so, and I think we can all be very proud of just that the tenacity has been there to stay at it. Ms. Langer, I'm sure, you know, you've, just, you can remember probably the first day you came into council, you were working on Mission Creek. Well, Laguna Channel is one of those things as well. It's the little sister, but it's still, it's really a serious issue. And I would hate to lose a bridge on the, if we're not funding that, I just would hate to lose one of those pearls in the Mission Creek system.
Agency Board, is that the bridge is funded in the Streets Capital Fund. The intent of this request was to leverage the Streets Capital Fund as far as an eligible cost within the redevelopment agency, but that bridge is funded.
Good, thank you. And then finally, Madam Chair, Madam Mayor Chair, the lower Milpiss pedestrian improvements, I mean, let's step back and look at what's happening on lower Milpiss Street right now. It's been a war zone for however many years, and that, that war is going to be over soon, and then we'd have the chance to finish that off and polish it up. And obviously, we owe it to that area, and it's just, it's also going to be in, one of those huge reliefs where everybody has put up with a miserable situation for a long time, and we really would be bringing that, that end of town to a happy close. So I strongly support that piece of the proposal.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mission Lagoon restoration, can we go into the details on that?
Madam Chair, Agency Board Members, the Mission Lagoon project's still very conceptual. Some of the ideas that have been discussed among the various departments, as I mentioned earlier, as well as meetings that we've had with area business owners, hotel, lodging, restaurant representatives, have looked at a variety of considerations. Number one, water quality. As we know, the lagoon does suffer from poor water quality, particularly in the winter months. We do have flood considerations that need to be taken into consideration. We do have habitat. We have endangered species that live in that lagoon. We have people that use the beach in that area, and so we have concerns about safety of people perhaps swimming in the lagoon, and we'd rather them be swimming near a lifeguard. So conceptually, what we're talking about is how do we restore that area for habitat, yet also provide recreation opportunities, address flooding and water quality, and essentially enhance that area for the State Street Cabrillo Boulevard? The exact components of the project have not been defined yet. Those are kind of our goals and objectives, and all the different things we realize we need to consider, and then also consider the wharf, and the fact that the wharf needs to be protected, particularly during winter months. So we're sort of in, sort of asking all the questions we need to ask, and we're hoping to bring on technical consultants that can start evaluating all the constraints and opportunities there, and begin to piece together what our options might be to move forward. So I don't have a really concrete answer for you, except that we've been really trying to tackle this project for a number of years, and we finally allocated some funding in Creeks. The departments are working together, and hopefully, I would imagine, by the end of the calendar year, we would have some conceptual thoughts about what our options are, and then also what the permitting issues are associated with whatever we do down in the coastal area, because that'll affect which direction we might go in as well.
I was looking at some historic photographs the other day, and from the '20s, '30s, '40s on, there wasn't anything there, as far as I could see. Is that correct? Quite by Stern's Wharf, anyway.
Agency Chair and members of the board, I don't, I can't answer specifically to the history, but certainly the waterfront has changed dramatically from when it used to support oil production to when the breakwater was constructed, the harbor was created, the wharf was built. What we have today is definitely influenced by how we've developed our waterfront.
So will this make the lagoon bigger or smaller? That's the, ask the simple question.
Agency Board Member Hotchkiss, I couldn't answer that for you now. I do know that when we look at the various issues, we will need to look at size in terms of not just, again, from all those same issues. You might want it larger for water quality, but smaller for recreation, because it looks like a place you'd want to go swimming. You have to consider the wharf, management of the beach sand, which is done, as you know, in the winter months, and to deal with the harbor area, and then also for people's access to the beach. All of those things have to be considered, and I think it would be certainly our intent as city staff to develop a consensus over what type of project is one that's supported- as city staff to develop a consensus over what type of project is one that's supported by the community, by council, and that we could get permits for.
Yeah, because there's some strong feelings down there among businesses in particular, and some of them resonate with me. Just looking at it, it's not a place I'd ever wanna go swimming, to be honest, and I hope nobody else would either. So I just throw that out. Okay. Well, be interesting to see what happens.
Before you go, Zachary, is this project also, this would be eligible for Measure B funds, Restoration Mission Lagoon, or no?
Madam Chair, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And just to reiterate, I mean, it's really important that we get the quote-unquote stakeholders involved there and listen to them. You understand, I'm sure. Thank you.
Other, any other, no, you're, Mr. Francisco?
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, one more question about the, about Laguna there and your putative $750,000 for channel improvements. Is there any possibility that that could be partly or totally Measure B funded? Are the improvements of a nature that that would be justifiable?
Agency Board, is that the element regarding the trash rack, I don't believe would. The issue of repair work to the channel might be able to be done in such a way that would be acceptable to the creeks board, but I can't-
I think we just heard from Ms. Zachary earlier that it was not.
What does the, what does the trash rack do exactly?
What it does is that the way the system, let me just quickly just go through how the system works, is that we have a channel coming down from the city, and then there's tide gates. Just in front of the tide gates is a series of pumps, and the pumps have a wet well, and to keep the trash that comes down from the city through the channel from going into the wet well-
Okay.
-that would plug up the pumps, we have a trash rack. And depending upon the event and the type of vegetation in the channel, and what comes down from the city, that could plug that rack. And right now, that rack is kept clear by staff essentially grabbing hold of a chain and pulling up a rack and a rake and keeping the stuff off.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not the most efficient method in a very dynamic, exciting-
Not high-tech, we could say.
Yeah, in a very dynamic, exciting flood event. So this would turn that into a more maintainable and more functional system.
It just seemed to me-
That's the primary focus of this improvement.
Okay, that makes sense. And it just seemed to me that there is perhaps a Measure B nexus if we're preventing trash from going into the ocean.
Mr. Wiley, did you-
I couldn't speak to that.
Madam Mayor, I just, I'm not sure everyone, sometimes we get these measures mixed up or forget. Measure B was totally local. Measure B was a city measure. The meaning of Measure B is really up to the city council. So eligibility is a council call. If you had to say, well, what did the voters think was going to happen, there was a pretty comprehensive statement provided to the voters in connection with Measure B, and that would be the four corners of, I think, what I'd suggest you'd look at in terms of Measure B eligibility. But just wanna be clear, this is, there are no state laws or federal requirements. This is totally a city council call.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. House?
I wanna return to the Library Plaza for just a minute. And perhaps, Mr. Boss, you can help us with this estimate that we're looking at here, the $2 million. First of all, we know it's an important piece of our downtown, critically important that it be renovated and done well, and yet we all choke a little on this number. But what's included in that $2 million, and why does it, why, give us some more background. I mean, how much does it need to be defended at $2 million, or is there, would 1.3 gut the project, or would it make it possible still? I mean, help me with that a little bit, because it seems like easy pickings, but it could also thwart something that not just Mr. Goss has been interested in for a long time.
Madam Chair, Agency Board Member House, that $2 million, if you recall, when we came to you with the design contract, that's what we estimated. That was a conservative estimate. Obviously, construction is favorable, construction costs at the current time are very favorable. However, we're not gonna be sure exactly how much this is gonna cost. I think this conceptual design process, at the end of that, we'll have a much better idea of the cost of the project, and that'll define the limits of the project. Is it just the plaza? Does it creep over to the Anna Kappa corner? So that conceptual design process, going through that and getting input from stakeholders and the number of city departments who are involved, is really gonna define what that project cost will be. So if you were to say $1.5 million, then I, we would curtail it to that $1.5 million.
Because I remember that one design went all the way around the corner. It was actually the Anna Kappa side where the bus stop is and all of that as well. It wasn't just that interior, that closer-in area.
You are correct. And there are, there's a definite difference in grades from the Annapamoo side of the street even back to where the books are dropped off in the back passeo there. There's about an eight, 10-foot drop, so that has to be accommodated for as well.
Do we anticipate blending funding from either private sources or others to be able to make up whatever gap there might be, or is that not, would we be prohibited from doing that in a project like this?
Madam Chair, Agency Board Member House, we had looked at that in the past. The Santa Barbara Museum of Art had an interest, and at one point offered to pay part, if not all, of the project. That was then retracted based on their financial situation. I'm not saying they have a bad financial situation. I'm just saying they had other things to look at. And it is always an opportunity in the future to look at those possible sources of funding, other sources of funding. However, I do think they're slim.
Right, I understand. But it's not, we're not limited by some prohibition of seeking funding like that.
You're correct.
And then to the big, the big one, the Police Department Building Construction, what we're talking about $13 million or $12.5 or whatever, and this being a, about a quarter maybe of what its total cost would be ultimately. So how harmful is it for us to dip into that, like maybe as being proposed by $500,000 or a million or some number, to be able to achieve some of these other goals? Could that be a detriment to that project by having it be a little bit less, or, I mean, how holy is the $13 million?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember House, this recommendation is coming from your council subcommittee that has been working on the police building project, and they're reporting back to you in two weeks with recommendations about how to move forward. And the thought process from the subcommittee that staff was concurring with was that we've got an approximate $50 million project here. And one of the recommendations will be, let's get a professional architect firm and cost estimating firm onboard, do a more conceptual design, and really hone in on what that ultimate dollar amount is going to need to be. But that we wanted to make a significant contribution of local Art Redevelopment Agency dollars to the project, so that if you have to go either ask the voters for more money or find some money, you've made a good faith effort of putting a real substantial amount of city dollars into the project already. And so the idea was, let's try to come up with approximately $20 million towards that project. And so that's what we've structured here, is a way to get you to $20 million. Policy call, we were gonna talk about it on the 28th. We can talk about it here as well, and members of the subcommittee can kinda chime in about, you know, why the $20 million was chosen, and if you took $500,000 off, if that would be a major change or not.
I mean, I know this is sort of sacrosanct, even, you know, it's a little dangerous to walk into this territory, but the fact is that if it were a $10 million number, you could do almost all the project, remaining projects in the bottom unfunded area, except for the Chapala Street Quarter improvements, and you'd, you know, or you'd be a long way in terms of achieving a whole lot of the rest of the goals that we have in a redevelopment agency, and still be showing a very significant 20% step up from the redevelopment agency towards a project like this. And I'm thinking about defensibility in terms of if we're ever challenged on the work, what we're doing here, that these are very realizable projects that we have on here. And so I just put that on the table for discussion. I'm sure somebody out there is just going, you gotta be crazy to take another $3 million away from it. But that would allow us to do the biggest bulk of this lower section, except for the big dollar one.
Maybe someone from the committee wants to opine on that, and I saw, Ms. Self, your light's been on for a while, and you're on the subcommittee, so if you wanna start.
Well, I think the committee felt that these are very taxing times, and if that is the route needed to get more funding, that it, it's better for us to show that we're being responsible and using our own money too. There may be a possibility of grants and other things that would supplement this. I just threw the taxing idea out. There are lots of things on the table that we're trying to consider. And I think what a lot of people don't understand is that the, if we were just to pick at it piecemeal, it could end up costing more, and we still wouldn't have an adequate earthquake-proof police department. And in talking to the policemen, they don't mind it, but it could use a little this and a little that, and again, we're back to the, when you do a little this and that, you know, it's sometimes better to start anew. I don't know if anybody else wants to comment on the committee about that portion, and then I do have other suggestions.
Why don't we continue that line of discussion, then I'll get back to you on the other pieces. Mr. White and then Mr. Rouse.
Madam Mayor, just, I wanna be sure I'm understood here, because it could easily be misunderstood. I share the sentiment about the significant contribution. $10 million, 11, whatever number it might be. I just look at the smaller dollar amount down here on the bottom, we could be achieving a whole number of our goals if we were to put the number at 10 or 11 million as opposed to 13.
So you're asking, is that 13 million a magic number somehow?
That's right.
Okay. Mr. White and then Mr. Rouse on this, and then we can go back to other things.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For myself, the urgency of the police project is just, is paramount. It is, when we, I think it is now, as we've talked as a council, this is the highest priority project virtually for the city at this point. Our, it is a health and safety concern every day. And Ms. Self certainly described, I think, the essence of the position of the committee, which is, we need to put our full faith and credit and make our, a strong commitment toward this project if we're gonna be going to our citizens and asking them to participate in this project in the, in these very, very difficult times. And so we need to winnow through our list of what we need to have and what's nice to have, and that's, obviously, this is one cut at it. And I look forward to having a further discussion in a couple of weeks with you, with the council, to show at least how we got there. And frankly, I feel, I'm very impressed with how staff, this, we didn't get to see this until, was it yesterday, or was, as far as our first look at this, I feel like staff has done a remarkable job in measuring the importance of the different projects and coming forward with a reasonable cut at the task. So while I would love to have another $10 million of the things that Mr. House is speaking to, I also feel so strongly that citizenry will be impressed with the approach of making an earnest commitment. Heck, we may lose RDA money to the state, and so we may end up $10 million short, and we may have to go back and be looking at the extra funding needed for the police building. So we're giving ourselves a little cushion by making this big commitment now.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, the recent events over the last few years, the public doesn't need to be convinced that we need to be disaster-prepared. The public will need to be convinced, I think, about the condition of the current station. It's not cosmetic. It's way beyond that. It's something where most employers could not have their employees working in those kind of conditions. So it's important, and it's, if we get the big shaker, which is, you know, happening all over the world right now, and could happen anytime, we're well, we're well advised to do this project. In addition, you know, RDA funds are completely eligible for this type of work, so it's a very legitimate commitment. And as Ms. Self pointed out, as we go forward to the voters, we better have a chunk of the dough up front to legitimize our efforts to ask for some kind of public funding, whether it be taxes or whatever approach we have. And we'll bring those options forward when we come back with our committee report in a couple of weeks.
Okay. I guess my question, as we continue this, is, and I'm agreeing with the approach taken, is, is there something from the unfunded projects that we also think is so important, like the Laguna Pump Station, that is worth maneuvering something around in the recommended future funding, and how do we do that? Because the pie's only so big. And so, maybe as we move forward to think about if there's consensus to move, if we do wanna move some things from the unfunded up and prioritize that, then we can, and figure out how to pay for it, which may mean moving some things down or off the list from up top. And I don't know the answer to that. Okay, back to Ms. Self, go ahead.
Thank you. I think it would be prudent of us to sort of pare down the scope, excuse me, of the library project. There's a lot of information coming out about sustainability principles being part of adaptive reuse, and I have questioned from the beginning the need to do a complete teardown and repour, you know, if that can be accomplished. And then driving down Anna Kappa, and that's part of the meltdown, you could not buy the plantings on that side of the building that are absolutely magnificent. So if we narrow the scope and say, okay, and maybe this would take another discussion, you know, these are the critical things we see. And maybe even asking the architect to say, in your work at this so far, what is critical? And so if we could pare a little bit out of there, I think our community would be much happier and see this as an example of an overzealous, overspending government. So we need to be prudent, as people are in their personal lives. And I think that, I don't know if that needs another discussion. But back to the lagoon, I do have a question. It doesn't appear from old pictures, there was a lagoon, and I don't know if any historic thing is needed, but I agree with Board Member, Councilmember Hotchkiss, that you'd need buy-in, because we have the Bird Refuge as an example of lagoon, what it brings to the community. And I don't know if swimming so much is an issue, but there, you know, the stench and other things. And then it dawned on me, and I've been meeting to meet with Mr. Benson of the creeks about this, we're spending millions of dollars on the Mission Creek Steelhead Trout Access. Am I wrong with the lagoon block it from the ocean, which is where we've done this so they can go up, but now we put a gate at the door? Is that, am I seeing that wrong?
Ms. Zachary, do you wanna clarify?
Madam Chair, members of the council, Agency Board and Agency Board Member Self, when steelhead migrate is during wet weather, and so the lagoon is open to the ocean. So there is tidal influence into Mission Lagoon. We have had steelhead enter Mission Lagoon and tried to go up Mission Creek and been stopped because of the barriers. And when they leave the upper reaches of the creek and head back to the ocean, it is at times when there's enough flow so that they can do that.
But Mission Lagoon now is, as I'm understanding, it is from the dredging, the little berm is created, and maybe I'm wrong. I'm asking for guidance here. But then if we make a real lagoon, would that create a different obstacle for them? And I know salmon, they jump over the stairs. Maybe that's what they need to do, or we could net them and bring them in.
Madam Chair, Agency Board Member Self, we would be sure to design any improvements to the lagoon that would allow steelhead passage, since that is habitat, that is- to the lagoon that would allow steelhead passage, since that is habitat that is considered critical and protected. So nothing that we would do would intentionally affect their ability to enter the lagoon.
Okay.
It seems a little counterintuitive. I do understand what you're asking. That's part of the management, of how do we manage a system for all the different issues that we might have.
Yeah, thank you. And then, so my suggestion would be if we could bite $500,000 out of the library, because we give a different direction and scope. And that if the 235 State Street parking lot doesn't give you flat tire tires, or you fall into gullies, that that be pushed down into unfunded. And that I see something as important is the Delavina Figaro intersection improvements. And there was a signal light proposed there and a grant to the Caltrans that was approved but is unfunded, and it's way down on the priority list. But why I think this is important is that there was an elderly man killed there. And because of that, they rerouted the bus to the next street up. It has to now navigate a bulbed-out intersection, which drivers have complained about. And, but it's not just that. It's that there are so many buses going down there that the property owners, I'm on the MTD liaison, and there have been property owners and tenants talking about the needed repainting of their buildings and the noise and fumes from the buses that have had that altered path. And it was explained to them, it's because of this signal light on Figaroa that has had them reroute the bus. So if we could put that in, we could put the bus back where they were, alleviate the neighborhood's concern and the safety issues. So there we've got some extra money, if anybody wants to add in.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to step back just a little bit and talk about what it is we're trying to accomplish today. I've heard a lot of good suggestions from my colleagues, some of which I think would require more detailed study to really be sure that's the way we wanted to go. We're fortunate in Santa Barbara in that we have a redevelopment agency that, at least some people at the state level have told me, has been a very effective redevelopment agency. We haven't wasted a lot of money. The money that the RDA has spent has gone for absolutely vital infrastructure, cultural institutions that are heavily used. So we have something to be proud of in our redevelopment agency. Part of what we're trying to do here is demonstrate to the state that, we're trying to demonstrate something that is apparently unusual in some jurisdictions. We have lots of absolutely vital, totally justifiable projects. Part of what we're trying to do, Mr. Armstrong, correct me if I'm wrong, is we're trying to nail this down so that we can make a better case why we need to preserve these funds.
Yeah, and one, on the nature of the projects, but second, that we actually have a firm agreement between the redevelopment agency and the city to do the projects.
Exactly.
That's probably just as critical.
Exactly. And so a lot of the things that we're looking at here, when we're talking about possibly moving things around, this is a discussion that we would have in much greater detail, traditionally, a little bit later in the year. And some of the things that have been suggested, you know, for instance, maybe $2 million, as Mr. Bossy said, $2 million is a conservative estimate for the library renovation. It may well come in under that. We'll know more about that soon. I suggested that we might be able to use Measure B money for the Laguna Channel improvements. There are a lot of different things that we could look at in more detail. And we will, and we should, in the coming months. But I think in terms of today's discussion, at least my feeling is, the list of projects that are recommended for future funding are all good projects. And if we can find opportunities for savings down the road and rebalance some of these things, because obviously there are very valuable projects in the unfunded area as well, we'll do that. But I think in terms of moving forward today, that if my colleagues agree, we could largely approve what we have before us, because it is a valid set of projects, and that will accomplish our main purpose.
I agree a lot with what you're saying. My only concern with that is that if there's something in the remaining unfunded project that we really want to see happen and get an agreement between RDA and the city, we need to move it up. And if we move it up, we need to somehow work with the numbers to balance it out. And understanding that, as Mr. Wiley said, there could be amendments to things. And obviously, as contracts or construction comes in under budget, you can move money around within those funded projects. So perhaps the way we can move forward with this is, I'm hearing that the Laguna pump station is something we want to move up into the funded area. And maybe for now, just to adjust some of those items in the funded area so we could fit, and maybe at the $750,000 level. I prefer the full funding, but if that's, that way, when we come back in a couple of weeks to actually make the agreement, that item is listed in the agreement. And we can agree that all the other things under recommended for funding is also listed in the agreement. So that would be my, I guess that's what you're asking of us today. So you can move forward to come back in two weeks, right?
Madam Mayor, just to try to make sure we're kind of grounded on what we're doing today and what future scenarios might play out to be. We are concerned that the state might try to eliminate redevelopment agencies effective July 1st. We don't think that's a legal approach. We think it's inconsistent with what the voters just passed in a statewide constitutional amendment. So there are a lot of legal challenges. But we want to protect our money for these vital projects as best we can from a legal standpoint as well, which is why in two weeks, we want to come back to you and lock down these projects with legal agreements between the city and the redevelopment agency to implement those projects, to try to provide an extra layer of protection if the state does go to eliminate redevelopment agencies. So yes, so within the next two weeks, we'd like to do that and create the mechanism. And Mr. Wiley can kind of follow up on that in a little more detail. If the state decides not to eliminate redevelopment agencies and instead goes an alternate approach of reforming redevelopment at the state level and setting new operational requirements, which we're supportive of and think are appropriate and easy for us to accomplish, that allows us to finish off the life of the agency over the next four years. And if that's the case, and if the threat of elimination of the redevelopment agency is no longer there, I think that gives the council and the redevelopment agency a little more flexibility down the road to modify your priorities, to take excess savings from projects and bring in a new project. I don't think what we're saying is that the highlighted projects on the top are the only projects you may work on for the rest of the redevelopment agency if the state threat goes away. That gives us back to where we were a year ago, which gives you some flexibility to finish off the project area and make those priority changes as you go forward.
So if we want to move the, I appreciate that, thank you. Because there are other things, like if we wanted to do the northwest corner of the trust, or want to go out for other things, or things like that. If we, but for today, if we wanted to move the Laguna pump channel up to the funded projects, and so to give you direction on making that agreement, what would be your suggestion and what you need from us today to do that?
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, certainly you'd need to identify how much money you want to put towards that project. And then as you're discussing, how do you want to juggle the funded projects that you've got to make that money available?
Knowing that in the future, we could amend those amounts.
Correct.
Right. So I'll go back to my original suggestion, knowing that it is flexible down the road, but at least to put it in the list of projects, which would be to move the Laguna pump station, the full 1.3, and then reduce the library plaza from $2 million down to 1.3, and reduce the $13 million added funding for PD down to 12.5. If we want to move that around again later, we can, but at least that gives staff direction to include that in there and secure it before knowing what the state's going to do. Mr. Wiley?
Madam Mayor, I hope this helps, because I think, I see this question, or the issue came up earlier in response to the question that Mr. Hotchkiss asked about the Delagaro Plaza project. And it really is, what's the point of no return on a project for the agency board? And there's two aspects to that. There's a legal aspect, the point of no return, and Mr. Bossy, I think, answered correctly. It's really, when you approve the construction contract, and we've got a general contractor that's bid this thing, and we've signed it, and we've told them, go build it, we can't, we've got a real legal problem if we go back at that point. But for example, in that project, we're well away from a construction contract. So we haven't reached the point of no return legally. But I think there's a different aspect. There's, and it's only you can answer this question, as a policy matter, what's the point of no return on a project? Is it when you've spent $50,000 on an architect designing it? You might say, no, that was, we needed to know generally what this thing would look like before we even decided to move forward. But maybe if you've spent $500,000 in environmental review and an architect, and that's my point of no return. I'd like to see that project happen, because we've spent so much money. And I have to say, and I won't go into detail on this, this all feeds into the legal basis we feel we would have for telling the state, under redevelopment law and under contract law. You know, the California Constitution and the federal constitution contains a clause called the contracts clause. And it says, government cannot force someone to invalidate a contract. It's called the contracts clause. So if we have contracts, we feel that under redevelopment law and under the constitution, the state can't tell us that we have to void those contracts. The contracts, as I mentioned earlier, are going to be between the agency and the city. So it gets back to that policy question of point of no return, but it's really going to be your call. And I mention this, because I see you struggling a bit with, how official is these decisions being made today? And if I understand correctly, we're looking for specific directions so we can develop these project-specific contracts, but it's not really going to bind you until we approve a construction contract for any of these projects.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I concur with the moving the Laguna pump station up, whether we use the full number or Mr. Kelly's number going forward. And I, you know, I would personally like to see maybe the RDA upgrade come off the project and move down, simply because I'm not really sure what's involved there. And I also would like to see our future complete traffic and circulation plan put into place, what we're going to do with mass transit and alternative transportation, different modes in that parking lot. So I think that's a future project. And then I would like to advocate for the Lot 10 restroom outside project to move up into the funded projects. Right now, we have porta potties out there, and there is a need, and there is a blight in an area out there that could use lighting and those restrooms, which is a, it's a pretty seedy area with a lot of unsavory activity. So I think that may help to alleviate that situation. And I agree with Mr. House about the library plaza is one of the essential elements. Perhaps could be reduced, per the mayor's suggestion, but definitely needs to stay up in the funded projects.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I may be the sole guy that thinks that the library thing is really important and don't want to see it cut back, because it's a, you know, elegant public space and an important one, has the juncture of, we're right there with a wonderful building for the county courthouse, the back of the museum. I mean, it's just a great area that should not be undertaken on the cheap. It's, you don't want to put plastic in there. You want to be sure that it's wood or whatever, a real substance. So I caution against reducing that $2 million figure. I don't think, we may not need to spend it, but we ought to view this as an absolute first-rate project, as an important part of our spaces. And I mean, that's a general comment, but I really would not cut back on that if at all possible. Thank you.
Mr. House?
This is an interesting little horse trading going on here. I want to say, I believe Mr. Rouse is on to something with the parking lot structure 10, public restroom. That is, there's a pressing need for that downtown. And we see the damage that's done when you don't have adequate restrooms. And if that were to be traded off for the RDA parking lot upgrade at 235 State, that, to me, it'd seem like an appropriate reprioritization. On the, I agree with Mr. Hotchkiss on the library plaza. I really feel strongly that we need to go into that with some real, real strong commitment, whether, you know, whether you can take a little bit away or not hurt the project, maybe you could. But I don't want to dig too deep into it. 1.3 million, that's $700,000 off of that. I worry about that. So maybe we can broker something less than if we're going to reduce it. But I really think it's important. That's truly at the very heart of the image and the substance of who we are in the city. And it's right between two of our major, most major institutions. I just don't want to be scrimping on that one. That's important. And then, back to make sure I'm not misunderstood on the police department, I want us to make a significant, not just a gesture, a big step up. $10 million, $11 million, $12 million. But $1 million off of 13 could go really far to making sure we do the library properly and that we get this Laguna pump station in. To me, that's still, that's still just, it is a made-up number, 13 million. Nobody has said 13 million versus 12 or 14 means anything. So I think that we have more flexibility on that number than any of the other ones.
Could we save $200,000 by reducing the downtown sidewalk improvements from 2.2 to 2? That can give us $200,000 right there. Is that a reasonable estimate?
Madam Mayor, yes. You know, that is looking at essentially six, I think, full block faces of sidewalk improvements, which is essentially concrete work. And so you can shave that back, and we could then prioritize about which segments are the top priority and scale that back.
But that's one way also, there's $200,000 there. So, Mr. White?
Madam Chair, I want to get back to Mr. Francisco's comment, which I thought, and also our staff has sort of reframed that as well. What are we trying to accomplish today? And basically, we want to get these contracts let. And I think that a couple of points have been raised here of the Laguna Channel and the bathrooms being bumped up and the parking lot being bumped down. And then there's a little jiggling that goes around with the numbers from there. And the broad brush is done. And I would propose that at this hour, that that would be a reasonable strategy, and that staff could juggle those numbers. I mean, I think the seven, again, whether it's 750 or 150 for the Laguna pumps and where the cops are getting, you know, another half million dollars, it doesn't make any difference to me. Just, that's the basic bunch of projects in the to-do list and the basic bunch of projects in the not-to-do list.
So one suggestion would be to follow on that, is to move the Laguna pump and the restroom up, to move the 235 State Street off, and then ask staff to come back in two weeks and figure out how you're going to allocate those ones moving up by shaving a couple of things, based on our discussion today.
Yes.
Instead of getting to the actual penny right now. Is that?
And I would so move, Madam Chair. Second.
Okay. Is that understandable? Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Self?
One comment. When I mention about shaving off the library, I am not talking about doing things in a diminished fashion for the end project. It's narrowing the scope. Does it need to wrap around to Anacapa Street at this time? Or is that like our lighting projects, where we're going to do this portion first, because this is a priority, and get other, you know, put it down the road? Thank you.
Great, understood. We understand what the motion is? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. That's very helpful. We do have a couple of closed sessions, if you want to, and so that means for the community arts workshop, that's a good thing. Okay, for those of you in the room.
And ensemble.
And, well, ensemble, we already figured out. But could you read item two?
Item two, conference with legal counsel regarding pending litigation, and item three, conference with labor negotiator.
Thank you. And we'll adjourn from closed session. Thank you very much.